Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 4th, regular commission meeting. Today, given our invocation, is Pastor Marty Hamilton with the Bayman at United Methodist Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Gruber. If you will please stand and bow your heads with us.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day, a beautiful day that you have given us as a blessing to us. Father, we thank you for your love and your grace. We thank you for the opportunities that you have set forth before us to be a blessing to the world around us. We thank you for leaders who give themselves and their abilities and their time to lead our community in our county. Father, I thank you for Baldwin County. I thank you for its people and its resources. And I thank you that you have continued to pour blessings upon us. And Lord, we do pray for those who need your touch this morning, especially members of our law enforcement, and just pray, God, that you would be with them, watch over them today. Lord, we pray for our schools. We continue to pray for their protection of our students and just for our staff and teachers. And Lord, we pray for our medical community, God, who serve us so well to keep us healthy and safe. And Lord, we just again thank you for the blessing of being a part of your kingdom and a part of this community. And Lord, we just pray that you will continue to pour out your blessings to bring peace and prosperity to all of your people. In the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Hamilton. All right, commissioners, before us, we have adoption of the September 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the September 20th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Gruber, second by Commissioner Underwood to approve the September 2022 regular meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gruber?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We pay the bills totaling $16,769,052.73. With the exception of those vendors commissioners request to be pulled, which are listed in Baldwin County accounts payable payments. There are none. So, about amount, $11,277,949.39 is payable to the Baldwin County Board of Education and $835,672.92 is payable to the Gulf Shores Board of Education for their portion of the county's sales and use tax.
All right, commissioners, you've heard a motion.
I'll second that.
Now, we have a motion by Commissioner Gruber to pay the bills. We have a second by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next up, commissioners, we have our consent agenda before us. We have items CA1 all the way to item CR1. Commissioners, when you make the motion, please note the, either if there are replacement items or anything else, if an item was pulled, there'd be item CA1, CM2, and CQ1 would have more language behind them when you make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we approve our consent agenda with a notation that item CA1 has a replacement attachment for tax abatement applications revised to include sales and use tax certificate of exemption. And then also, the other notation would be that CM2 has been pulled at the request of staff and will be brought back to a future meeting, and that item CQ1 has a replacement item, staff recommendation revised reflect updated quote.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard a motion.
I'll second that.
Now, we have a motion by Commissioner Underwood to adopt our consent agenda, second by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion on our consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up, we're at our presentations. We have a, we did a presentation yesterday. We heard from the Baldwin Family Village Foundation, and now we're on item DA2. It's a proclamation with the Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October 2022. Commissioner Underwood will be presenting this proclamation.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation from here. This is a proclamation declaring October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects more than 4 million Americans each year, and whereas 1 in 3 Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled, that we hereby set aside October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge the citizens of Baldwin County, Alabama, to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. You want to come to the podium or up front and we'll...
Ms. McLeod may want to say something about the lighthouse, and the podium is yours.
Good morning. I actually wrote something this time.
No, no, do we have, did we get purple ribbons this time?
I did not bring them.
We actually got one that's a pin. I had to go all purple.
This year, the lighthouse is actually honoring the campaign, Everyone Knows Someone Affected by Domestic Violence. And if you think about what that means, every single person in here, every single person you know, knows someone that's either directly or indirectly affected by domestic violence, which is a massive number. So not only are we inviting the community to lift your voices with ours as far as educating, but it's also about lifting support for each other. It's about letting people know that there's help out there, that there's resources out there, and that there's, they don't have to be silent, that they have a voice, and you can help them find that voice as they educated and proactive bystander. So obviously, thank you all so much for lifting your voices with ours and encouraging Baldwin County and the citizens of Baldwin County to not, to no longer tolerate domestic violence. Thank you.
Commissioners, y'all want to come down and get a picture?
I appreciate you being down.
I just, you know, just, you know, people don't realize, you know, how much domestic violence there is in Baldwin County. I mean, it's, it's more than what we'd love to see it, but it does exist, and it breaks a lot of families up, and they have to seek help from somewhere. So, you know, they reach out to, you know, the different agencies to give them some help. And we're very fortunate in Baldwin County to have some of these facilities that, that they can go to. So, thank y'all for what y'all do, for supporting our citizens in Baldwin County.
There is no excuse for abuse, but it is so rampant, and particularly, it's not just women. But when people level people to lower their self-esteem and trap them and make them feel like that they can't have anywhere to go, it breaks my heart. And so I am thankful for, for organizations such as the lighthouse that are there when people have nowhere else to turn. And I'm thankful for all of the law enforcement communities and the doctors and the medical facilities that, that I'm sure, I don't know how it all works, but that, I know people who have come through your, your organization, and I'm thankful that it's there. And I'm also, just want this to be an opportunity to show awareness and make it expose these people, you know, let them know that it's not going to be easy, but you can get out of that if you're in it. And if you're a victim and you've survived, then more power and courage to you. And I'm just thankful that we have this opportunity every year to do this, and I appreciate what you guys do.
I just, like Billy, Commissioner Underwood said, it's just, the things that y'all, the women and men go through is tough. And during my career, I've only had to witness it one time, domestic violence, when I was a state trooper, and that's the only time I ever had to draw my weapon. And that was, that was a touchy situation for, and it just broke my heart what that woman had to go through. And all she wanted to do was to leave, leave her house, and he wouldn't let her. So, I just thank y'all for that. And I just want to thank the law enforcement for what they have to go through. It's tough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLeod, for sharing with us today. I'm a, I'm a very big advocate of the lighthouse, and I have, in my other line of work, utilized your services with, I guess you could say, participants in my classroom that have now decided to not be in that bondage anymore and decide to make the call. And there's been many a nights where we have sat around after everybody's left, and I let people use my cellphone to make the call to your facility. And I don't listen to the conversation or anything, but I, I know once the, the female has made that call, that the relief that's on her face when I talk to her after it's all over with is, is something that only y'all witness, and I get to witness sometime, and then, but it's all about reaching out. I can't, over 4 million people are affected by this. I don't know the numbers in Baldwin County. I know it's up there. It's something that we deal with, and, and I don't think people realize the trickle-down effect of domestic violence inside a household as well with children involved, because those children that are witness to this are not only being abused themselves, but they get caught up in the system as well. A large majority get caught up in the system with drug problems, alcohol problems, mental health issues. It's a horrible trickle-down effect.
All right. I'll just read it from here.
Okay.
This proclamation proclaiming October 5th, 2022, Walk to School Day in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas the Baldwin County Commission supports policies and programs that focus on health and wellness and healthier community environments, and whereas the health and safety of children is the highest concern to the citizens of Baldwin County, and then whereas walking and biking can help enhance the health and overall physical activity of children, improve our air quality and the environment, and reduce traffic congestion and speed in and around school zones, and whereas safety, excuse me, safe routes to school is a national and international movement to create safe, convenient, and fun opportunities for children to walk and bike to school, and whereas safe routes to school efforts help remove barriers to walking and biking to school through improvement of infrastructure and facilities and the creation of education, encouragement, engineering, enforcement, and evaluation programs, and whereas the Baldwin County Commission recognizes the importance of making walking and biking to school a safe activity, and whereas October is International Walk to School Month, which is an opportunity to highlight and further safe route to school initiatives, and whereas International Walk to School Day is a fun event that inspires the community to come together and promote health, healthy and safer routes for students to walk and bike to school, and to whereas all 3 public school districts in Baldwin County will participate in International Walk to School Day on October 5th, 2022. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled that October 5th, 2022 is hereby set aside as Walk to School Day in Baldwin County, Alabama.
You want to say some, few words?
Sarah, you want to first?
Good morning, Commissioners. I would just say thank you for recognizing the safe routes to school and supporting our initiatives here. Ms. Charlene is with the Baldwin County Trailblazers, and the Trailblazers has been working on safe routes to school for many years, and so now I'll let Ms. Charlene say a couple of words.
Okay, I was recruited by Tico Wiseman, who was the founder of the Trailblazers. When I had a small child in school, and I had a bike train going to the school, just of kids that were riding from the neighborhood, and we rode together, and Tico's like, you must be involved with this, and she was working then with the City of Fairhope, and it was International Walk to School Day where it happened, and where she really hooked me into this, and I've stayed hooked for a couple of decades now. And one of the things I see is kids, kids quit walking to school, parents got scared, and kids didn't walk because the parents didn't let them, they weren't comfortable. So the International Walk to School Day is an event that mobilizes support around it. So we have been doing, I started walking once a week, I mean, once a month for 6 years with 3 different schools in Fairhope, and I thought that was wonderful, but it didn't really affect health. And I thought the only way we can affect health of children is if we walk daily. And so we created in Fairhope, the Baldwin County Trailblazers and City of Fairhope, and Fairhope West, we created the first daily walking school bus in the state of Alabama. We are now on year 10. We created this in 2013, so we walk 5 days a week, rain or shine, now coming on year 10. And I can tell you, it transforms the community, the parents walk too, I never knew the whole families would walk, and the family dog, I mean, it's, it's a community that walks down the sidewalk, and I would say that it's pretty transformative. So my hope after seeing what this does in a community was that it spreads. And now with partnering with the Eastern Shore MPO, and with all 3 school districts in Baldwin County, saying they are interested in being a part of this, and they are promoting it in their district, I see that what started, what we started at one small school is going to spread across the county. And all it does is add to kids getting to school, more healthy, ready to learn, ready to focus, ready to sit down, and I think parents are happier too. Our parents say, oh my God, over the summer, I gained all this weight, I wasn't walking to school anymore, I just realized that's what it was. So the whole, it affects the whole community. People are happier, and kids are way better suited to start sitting down in a classroom when they walk to school. So we are thrilled that we see that this, that the county itself is now going to start to grow these programs in many other communities. And so the support of Baldwin County Commissioners is essential. We appreciate y'all, we appreciate, you know, listening to this about the domestic violence and the Lighthouse. I mean, we're all looking at how do we become healthy? What are the ways we can increase our health in our communities? And this is one way, and y'all are supporting it, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get a picture, Matthew, and then we'll come down and get one.
Tell anybody that wants to walk tomorrow, there's several, it's a little discussion. Orange Beach, Fairhope, walking.
I'm going to Foley. I want to get the house.
Yes, yes, okay. Now, I want to show this one of these. Why? Okay, thank y'all very much. I'll give out one to you, I appreciate. Yeah, I want to get to that one.
Do you have anything y'all would like to say?
This is something that Tico would be proud of. You know, she got started, you know, way back when, when they started doing the trails, and, you know, and she was so persistent, you know, and we got just about everything completed that she wanted to have done. Now this program is another one that was dear to her heart, too. And it's a good thing, you know, and, and, you know, it gives the kids, you know, in the mornings, a little bit of fresh air, they get to that, and it takes a little bit of that energy out of them before they get in school, and so, but yeah, it's, it's a good program, and thank you for bringing it to us, and so we could have a proclamation and declaring it the Walk to School Days in October. Thank you so much.
Well, I met you a year ago, I can't believe it's already been that long, and I was able to walk with you guys at the Fairhope West Elementary, and I remember talking with Sarah, and y'all were getting all this going, and I have not been able to make any of your meetings, but I am in full support, because I was so impressed with those children and the parents, and it just happened to be on a beautiful day like it is today as well. I'm sure there's some days that, you know, with our weather here, that's not as desirable, but what a better time to get, to spur the interest of people. I lived in town when I grew up, and I walked to school, sometimes rode my little bike to school, and, you know, didn't even have a ch, I didn't have a lock back then, you didn't worry about that kind of stuff. You think about it, your parents didn't think about anything happening to you back then, and it blows my mind when I see people lined up for miles to pick their children up and take their children to school, and I'm like, well, does the school bus not work anymore? You know, because all these people can't live inside town, at least where, where I'm from, you know? And, and everybody's like, no, they, you know, they start lining up at 1 o'clock in the afternoon to pick their kids up at 3, and I'm like, wow, don't y'all have anything better to do with your time? But I think this is just an awesome opportunity, the awareness. You didn't mention anything about the shirt you were wearing, of what it, can you come tell us?
He needs brighter than this.
And that's, they get that as an award, correct?
Wait, no, they, no, they didn't purchase.
They do purchase those, okay. So those are really neat shirts, and I have not RSVP'd and told y'all I was going to be there because my schedule is so crazy, but I am going to be at the Foley Elementary Walk. And, and my understanding is these are all new this year, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Only Fairhope West was going on before.
Fairhope West, so we've got Dan Heath.
And you got Gulf Shores and Orange Beach?
All, yeah, Orange Beach and all 3 Gulf Shores. So it's enormous, and that's because of the long-range steering committee that is now looking at this county walk.
Well, I am so excited, and I hope to see it in some of the more walkable communities. Not every school is located in a walkable community, we realize that, and I know that we love to put our schools out on the highways and byways so everybody can see how fabulous our schools are, but hopefully with all these sidewalk grant opportunities and stuff that are available, we'll get more walkable routes to schools, and we'll see more participation, and this is such a pleasure to, to be able to honor you guys this, this way, and thank you.
Ms. Charlene, I'm new to the Commission, so I just want to say thank you for being here and to meet you. I'll see more of you. The only one that ever walked to school in my family was my father, so he walked to Barnwell, Barnwell Community Center back in the 50s, and, but we, we, our family lived too far from the schools to, to walk, but it's an awesome thing, and I'm just, I'm proud that Fairhope does this, or actually Baldwin County does this, because I didn't even know about it, and I've lived here all my life, and it's just, it's, we need to get it out more, more people, you know, in the community, but thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Charlene, for what you're doing. You mentioned a lot about the health aspect of these kids, and even the parents and stuff, so that's, that's part of my, I like that aspect as well, so those kids that get up every morning and, and walk to school definitely are benefiting more than those who are not. So I encourage all students and families, if this is something you would like to participate in, to look at where they're happening at and, and start walking to school. I, like Matt, was unable to do this, I lived a little too far, I would have had to leave a few hours early if I was going to walk to school, so.
Me, too.
Yeah, it'd been a long, long hike from Baymanet to Bayside, so when I first was growing up, and then even, even more so to go to the high school here, but I met, I don't know where the story was, but I was talking to somebody the other day in town, and there, we discovered that there was a child here in our community in Baymanet that has been walking to school since they were in kindergarten, all the way until they could get a driver's license, every single day, like you said, rain or shine, so there's, there's a few students around here that, that that's their only means to get to school, and it just shows to me, the kids that are doing it all by themselves, the dedication to, to get to school and whether their parents can take them or not, so just another aspect of things. But thank you for what you do. I don't know if any of those walks are happening in my area tomorrow, so I might have to travel to somebody else's area to, to walk to school, so. Sarah, we need to get some of that stuff arranged here in Baymanet one day, and help me out with that, whatever I need to do to get with our district down here to, to start walking to school, and then it'd be easy for me to park here and walk to one of these schools here, so thank y'all so much. Commissioners?
Sorry.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to make, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation proclaiming October 5th, 2022, Walk to School Day in Baldwin County, Alabama.
So what I'll do is I'll just accept your motion, and Commissioner Gruber, I'll accept your, that is a second, so. Y'all both are starting to make a motion at the same time, so.
Sorry, kid.
So we have a motion by Commissioner McKenzie, a second by Commissioner Gruber to adopt resolution 2023/009. This is in support of, for safe routes to school and proclamation for Baldwin County Walk to School Day on October 5th, 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you so much, Ms. Charlene, for being here, Dan, thank you, Sarah. We have no public hearings today. Under our other staff recommendations, the first 3 that we talked about were discussion items yesterday at the work session. There's no action needed today. Item FM2 is left up to us what we would like to do with the letter. We have to, we don't have to do anything today. We can wait, and there's, there's future opportunities, we know the deadline that this has to be turned in by, you know, so I'm leaving it up to, to us today to discuss this, and if Kay and here, if any questions we have for her.
Is there a way that we could go ahead and vote to give you the permission to sign this letter after the meeting on Thursday, so we don't have to have another meeting?
That would be up to.
That's a legal question.
We could vote it for all of them, I mean, for all of you.
So right now, it currently has a signature line for all 4 of you, but we can change that if you wish?
No, I don't like that, because we're sending a letter to a DECA, and, and I think it looks good when 4 signatures are on there.
What's the contingency on Thursday that?
We could just wait and send it after Thursday? We can go ahead and sign it now, or not?
Yeah, but you can absolutely vote to do that, I guess I'm just, I don't know much about what's going on here, but what's the, what is the Thursday?
It's that letter, Thursday's the mayor's meeting to discuss the, a DECA, a CDBG.
I think what we can do is we can, we can vote on this letter today. Did you want the letter of support from, from the mayors? I mean, we could vote contingent upon the mayor's letter of approval?
Yeah.
Something like that? What we were waiting for, we can't take any action on Thursday.
Right.
So, we don't know what the mayors think about this yet, when we bring it up, that's why we were going to have the special meeting on Monday, but unfortunately, I don't think Matt can attend the special meeting on Monday, so we're trying to not have the special meeting on Monday and just get this taken care of.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm, I'm open to what we, we want to do, and I'd like to have a unified front on it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want, you know, why we can't just go ahead and sign it, I mean, it's basically, this is what we're saying we want to do, make the Commission does. Now, if, if the municipalities want to do something a little bit different in it, they can include that letter to them as well. I mean, because it doesn't change our status.
I just think.
It doesn't change our status, because, you know, it's, you know.
My hopes for Commissioner Gruber is that the mayors would support us by saying they understand why we don't want to handle the money, because right now, as it stands, we're supposed to be the, the bearer of the money and distribute it amongst the municipalities, and if, and if they came together and said, hey, look, we, we understand the county's position, and we don't want to put any more burden on them, we want the state to handle this money, it would just, it would look better than our 4 signatures on that letter. I mean, we could, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, signing the letter and, and making a motion, getting it across the board, day contingent upon the mayor's support, and if the mayors don't support it, we withdraw our motion.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, it's really just a letter of support, right? So there's no real legal significance to what you're doing, so I think that's fine to, to approve it contingent upon the, the support of the mayors at the Thursday meeting, and, and then if they don't support it, then you don't have to do anything else, you can just not sign it, don't send it.
I mean, we're not wasting anything if we, if we go ahead and, and sign it today that way, you know?
Right, and, and I just, I, I know that this came in at the, at a late hour, and I don't know if you had any questions or any of the comments that you wanted to discuss or, or would like to go over at this time, or even in the future?
I think I made enough comments yesterday, I was just concerned about the format, but it's all in there, it's just, I was hoping it could be a little. It is, and we wish we could make it shorter as well, so.
Hey Karen, can I maybe make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
On the, on the, maybe on the preface of that letter, have a cover page with the, with the bullet points?
Yes, sir.
Extreme bullet points, like getting right to the, the meat of the subject, and, and maybe saying, fine, within this letter, you'll see how we're backing our, that way they see right up.
It doesn't change our status because, you know, it's, you know.
My hopes for, my hopes for Commissioner Gruber is that the mayors would support us by saying they understand why we don't want to handle the money. Because right now, as it stands, we're supposed to be the bearer of the money and distribute it amongst the municipalities. And if, and if they came together and said, hey, look, we, we understand the county's position, and we don't want to put any more burden on them. We want the state to handle this money. It would just, it would look better than our four signatures on that letter. I mean, we could, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to signing the letter and making a motion, getting it across the board, day contingent upon the mayor's support. And if the mayors don't support it, we withdraw our motion.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, it's really just a letter of support, right? So there's no real legal significance to what you're doing. So I think that's fine to approve it contingent upon the, the support of the mayors at the Thursday meeting. And then if they don't support it, then you don't have to do anything else. You can just not sign it. Don't send it.
I mean, we're not wasting anything if we, if we go ahead and sign it today that way, you know.
Right. And I just, I know that this came in at the, at a late hour. And I don't know if you had any questions or any of the comments that you wanted to discuss or would like to go over at this time or even in the future?
I think I made enough comments yesterday. I was just concerned about the format, but it's all in there. It's just, I was hoping it could be a little.
It is. And we wish we could make it shorter as well.
Hey, Karen, can I maybe make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
On the, on the, maybe on the preface of that letter, have a cover page with the, with the bullet points?
Yes, sir.
Extreme bullet points, like getting right to the, the meat of the subject and, and maybe saying, find within this letter, you'll see how we're backing our, that way they see right up front that we don't want to handle the money.
Okay.
They can, I don't know how you could work it, but I think.
So if I, if I could, if I could, we could remove the, the letter portion of this and make this a document as an attachment of comments and just create one letter with those few bullet points, if that would be helpful.
I think you said.
And have your signatures on that front cover.
I think you mentioned that yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
And said that y'all had made a decision, though, to not do it that way. But when watching the presentation, when we got to the end, it was like there was the bullet point. And it's like, when I opened up the PDF document and started reading it, I'm like, cut to the chase. What are we asking?
I understand.
So we could just, it's all good. Let's just reverse it.
We can. Absolutely.
Put, put the ending up front, and then let's go ahead and, and vote on that today, commissioners. And then we can still make it contingent upon the mayor's letter. We don't have to make it contingent upon. We can go ahead and do what we want to today.
I would say these comments, that, I'm not sure these comments will change once you talk to the mayors of the municipalities. It would be helpful for them to be in support of these comments.
Right.
So that would be up to you if you wanted to say, this is what we've already provided or we're about to provide this. I think that's really just, you know, your decision.
I think I'm pretty good with telling the mayors, this is what we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then let them come along. I think if, if we have a unified front up here, not really asking them for help, but say, hey, look, this is, this is where we're going with this. We appreciate your support, but.
Well, everyone I've talked to, this is their wishes.
Absolutely.
And I believe they're all going to be in line. They've been talking to us as well. So what we'll do then, Chairman, is we will revise the letter, make it a cover letter, make this an attachment document, do those bullet points, and then get it to all four of you for your.
Signatures on the front.
On the front. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Perfect. That works.
Sounds good. All right, commissioners. And thank you, Kayanne, for y'all's hard work on this.
Thank you so much. Absolutely.
They worked hard on it.
Commissioners, y'all got a motion for FM2?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we do exactly what we just discussed. We have Kayanne revise the letter with, basically with a cover letter with bullet points and the, and the, all the data that was in the letter format be shown as an attachment and that we go ahead and approve that today.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner Gruber to approve item FM2. Did you get all that on news?
Four items.
I mean, this is on the fly. This is something you told me to make my mind up on today. So we did it on the fly. So if you need any more things, we'll just get with Kay.
It's that recommendation that's currently there. That is approved, the letter is sent to a DECA. So I mean, that really will.
Okay. We're just going to re, kind of redo the letter. All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Commissioners, we need to vote on item FQ1.
I'll make a motion that we approve the item FQ1, the one-time paid holiday for county employees. That's going to be next December 23rd, I think.
I'll second that.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner McKenzie to approve item FQ1. This is a one-time, one-time paid holiday for county employees in December of 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Gruber, you got that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any commissioner request? I'll start with Commissioner Underwood.
Yes. I asked Deidre to be here today. And I've asked her to give us a little update on, we constantly hear that we're in an employees market, whereas that we can't find enough employees for various departments. And we have some quite large departments that are down several employees. And so I'm not an HR person. I've, I know y'all get tired of me saying what I am. I'm an accountant, okay?
What do you do for a living?
I'm not the finance chair yet. But that's just a disclaimer.
I love it.
That, I just started thinking, I was reading an article of all these many emails that we get in, and it was talking about, there are different segments of the work areas that haven't suffered from not having people employed. And what are those people doing that are doing it to keep their employees and to keep people hired? And so I started thinking about, how are we going out and getting employees? Are we doing any recruiting efforts? And so I reached out to Deidre because I said, I'm not going to put you on the spot in a, in an open meeting. And I said, what do you feel like that we could do to improve our efforts? And I just started thinking about my niece, who is also a CPA. She used to go to the universities. When they were looking to hire at the accounting firm that she worked at, they would go to the universities and recruit. And so I'm sitting here thinking, our military has recruiters. They recruit people. Why can't we start a recruiting thing or look into it? And so, Deidre, I will let you talk about what you've come up with or what we are doing and not doing, and what you think we might could do. And I know you said, well, if you want to spend some money. And I'm like, well, if we need employees and what we need to do to get those employees, I think we need to make an effort.
Okay.
Absolutely. So I'll, I'll start off with the basics of what we do when we, when we post a job. So when we fir, when we initially post a job, of course, we post it on our own website, which is NeoGov, or our software is through NeoGov on our website. NeoGov then sends those job positions out to Indeed.com, which is, is a really good career social media that a lot of people utilize. And so that, that is an automatic. We also post it on the Alabama Job Link website, every position. We post on, not every position, but some of the specialized positions. We post on the individual colleges' job posting sites, which is powered through a software called Handshake. And all of the colleges are using that social media platform, and we post directly to there. And we have gotten several candidates from, from those job postings. Additionally, with some of the more specialized positions, we post on the ACCA website. Like, right now, we have the permit subdivision manager posted out there through ACCA. We utilize the ACCMA, so that's the Alabama, the Managers Association. And we also have the AAPPA that I host statewide, and that's for the personnel administrators. We do post through chambers of commerce. North Baldwin, we'll pick them up. We, we have a constant posting on the South Baldwin Chamber of Commerce. And I'm getting set up with the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce to get our job postings on there as well. Now, with job fairs, we, we will be attending the November 15th Job Fair that is going to be put on by the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce. And we are also laying the, the plans out to just host our own employer, our own job fair for the county, especially since we have, with the budget passing, that we have very, we have a lot of operator positions open for the Highway Department, Solid Ways positions. And so we think that it'll be very good for us just to host our own. Like, I noticed that the Board of Education is just hosting their own here coming up. And so I think that'd just be a great idea just to host our own as well. I do have initial information for the Gateway Initiative that, that we work closely with, the county works closely with. And so I'll be meeting with her ahead of that program to see what we can do to, to utilize more, more applicants out of that kind of pool. And if we need apprenticeship programs, we can do that as well. I've spoken with Terry about just going to, straight to the colleges to recruit. Job fairs with the colleges normally happen in April and in September. In September, it happened the week of, of all of our budget. And so I could not attend that week, which was very unfortunate. But, you know, if we have to go and we got to pluck them out of mechanic school, then, then that's what we'll do. And so I have not talked to Joey about that yet, but I have been talking to Terry about it. And, you know, and she's willing to go to those schools as well to, to try to recruit students. And I think, trying to see, I know with increasing the operator pay from up to 1642 for the entry level, operator ones, up to 2053, starting entry level pay, I'm hoping that that will also help with recruiting.
I think, can I add something? Can I say something? I think, Deidre, another idea that I was thinking about, let's just say, for instance, like, this weekend, we had old-time days at Bicentennial Park. Over 2,500 plus in attendance there. There's places when we do these, whether it's us doing them or any city or municipality that's doing some type of festival or event, if there's a way that we can get a tent set up that has Baldwin County logo on it or whatever, pay the little entry fee to get into some of these festivals, fairs, or whatever, and have, you know, some type of employment opportunity. Come check us out. Have some literature to hand out because you're constantly coming in contact with the public in different ways. Someplace like at Bicentennial Park, it would, it would be cool to have, like, one of our new garbage trucks out there, one of Joey's big pieces of equipment, just something just that draws eyes that way. Because everybody's looking, I mean, if you set a bunch of old cars out there, everybody goes and looks at them. If you set old tractors out there, everybody goes looking. If people see cool equipment, we could have law enforcement out there, sheriff opportunities with maybe the Bearcat out there or something like that. I mean, there's all kind of opportunities to draw ourselves more into the public with what we look forward to if you became an employee for Baldwin County. Just, just.
Good idea.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We have, and there's a lot of festivals year round. And I think that's a great idea. And I do think that you've already got some great ideas that what we've really been doing is just posting. You've been posting a lot of places, but it means a lot when somebody actually stands there and says, I love my job, you know, and I like doing what I do. And so I know that there's going to be, surely, Frank, you've got somebody that works in the Highway Department that loves their job. And, and then, you know, you could get that person whenever you're looking for operators or whatever. And we go to these mechanic schools or stuff. I know that's one of the areas, I know Terry said something about, I'm looking for a solid waste technician. I don't think these guys are on these online things, you know, or girls or whatever. And so I think that if we can go to, I think the Baldwin County Board of Education has a, a high school when, that Central Baldwin was telling me about, a Gail at Central Baldwin Chamber, I'm sorry, Central Baldwin Chamber. And she was like, you know, we, we've, we've talked it and said it enough times that not everybody goes to traditional four-year-plus institutional college. We've got so much workforce that's available. And I think that it would be great to pull somebody, let, let them vie to be that ambassador for the Highway Department. Ask Terry to let somebody vie to be that ambassador for, for Solid Ways. I run across employees that love their job, and I run across employees that hate their job. And I have to say, why do you work here? If you hate your job so bad, why do you work here? Of course, they're merit employees. They're not people that, you know, report directly to me. And I said, what can we do to make your job better? You know? Oh, I don't know. I just work for the benefits. And I'm like, well, that's a shame. That's a shame that that's the only reason you come to work. And so I think that if we are not getting applications, that we need to make this effort. And, you know, if, if we see that some things are just not working, we can reevaluate some of those things. But I think that, that we wouldn't put the complete burden on, on the HR department, or that you could ask the people from the, the various departments that are really looking for people and have, I know the Sheriff's got needs, Highway, Solid Ways, those are three of the biggest ones that are down employees. And, and if we, you know, if we've got some departments here that, that, that aren't lacking, what are those departments doing? You know, are they, does everybody love what they do and their job? Is it that exciting? I'm gonna tell you, okay, I'm an accountant. I do not think accounting is the most exciting thing to do. Matter of fact, it is, it is tough. But if you've got a great place to work and that, and I, I saw two of the girls that work in accounting at a class one day, and they were like, we love our job. And I'm like, oh, are y'all just telling me that? And they're like, no, we do, you know? Because I get enough of them that say they don't. So I do appreciate the honesty. But thank you for being here today, and thank you for doing that research. And I guess, as whatever we need, just let us know what you need. And then, what if it needs a commission vote, or if it needs a, a budget adjustment or whatever, I'm hoping the rest of you guys would support that.
Absolutely. Just going back to something, I think you staying in tune with the chambers. They'll have every little event that's going on in their neck of the woods that they can plug you into. You know, sometimes they ask for fees to, to, to set up tents. Sometimes they don't. So I mean, I think it's a bare minimal to, to get our recognition out there. I, I think about things like when you were paramedic and stuff like that. I think what draws paramedics to that field of work, the first thing is, is that you get to ride around in a pretty cool truck that's got a lot of stuff in it. So when you have a paramedic truck set up at some of these job fairs, all the kids are in it. And like, the helicopter, I mean, there was, I saw something that Zach had posted, where they were, all these kids running out of that helicopter with MedStar. So I mean, it's, it's that kind of stuff that we, we can have tangible. And if you, if you had a, a working garbage truck out there flipping cans over and let, let somebody pull the lever to put the can over me, you might have a new garbage truck driver one day. So I think it's hands-on. We can have some computers set up there. Brian can have some, some technical stuff set up out there. Zach could have his EMA stuff set up. It could, it could go a long way for recruitment process for us. And I think this is a new, a new era for us, a new quadrantium. We got a lot of ideas, and recruitment of employees is, is high on our list. And, and I think we'd be willing to spend a little money in efforts to do better recruitment than what we've been doing. So thank you, Deidre, for putting together this whole presentation for Commissioner Underwood, because it's made me do a lot of thinking just sitting up here. So commissioners, y'all have anything else you want to add?
I just, you know, from my indication that I'm getting from some of these people that are doing the interviews, they get the appointments, and then they don't show up for an appointment. You know, that's bad. I mean, you know, when you get selected and then you're come for an appointment and you don't even show up. I mean, that's the biggest problem, I think, you know? It's, we're getting plenty of applications, but then when you get to screening them, get the ones that you picked out, they don't even show up. I mean, that's, I mean, how do you get the people to understand, you know? You know, this is, it's not a bad place to work for. It's a great place. You know, I spent many years, you know, working this, and I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, you know, it's just that, I don't, I don't know what, what's going to take to change that mindset, you know, of, you know, if I got an appointment, I'm going to go to that appointment, you know?
I tell you, face to face is a whole lot different. I kept getting the emails from Sarah about walking to school tomorrow. And I was like, oh, I got so much going on right now, okay? And you got to be there at 6:45. And then you got to get dressed to go to regular work and all that kind of stuff. And so, but when I saw them face to face, I was like, I can't tell them no. So sometimes when you see people face to face, but when it's just electronic and all you're doing is submitting stuff that kind of a way, and honestly, it might just be me, but sometimes I have a hard time finding that stuff online. And so I think that it ain't just me. I hear it from other people. So I think we need to get out there and, and, and I don't mean show up with the whole crew at one place, but, you know, if, if we're needing mechanics, okay, which I heard that was something we're low on in, in some of the departments. And if we've all hired a bunch, that's great. But if we haven't, then we need to go, like, I know people send their children, because I do their tax returns, and they get credits for sending them to these schools. Like, they send them to diesel mechanic school, and they send them to stuff all the time. Then, then we need to, we need to be in touch with, with those, and we need to be there. You know, we need to be standing there at those job fairs when they have them in the spring and stuff like that. And we need to have that, that person. There's one guy that works in one of the highway facilities. He's like, man, I love driving those dump trucks. They are nice. And y'all get some, y'all trade them in every few years. And I'm never in an old junky piece of equipment. I love my dump truck that I get to drive, you know? And so you find somebody.
Give me that name so I can bring him with me.
I'll get you that name. And I'm sure he would go. He would go. And he's a talker, too. So I think that that would be, that would be great. Okay.
Thank you.
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Deidre. Thanks, Deidre. Any other commissioner requests?
No, sir.
All right. Got some addenda here. Item HA1, this is Corrected Revised Tax Abatement Application by Novellus.
I'll make a motion that we approve the item HA1, the Corrected Revised Tax Abatement Application by Novellus Corporation.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner McKenzie to approve item HA1. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
HA2 is the proposal we talked about yesterday from M&amp;R Solutions. After talking with them yesterday, our staff sent a new memorandum of understanding with them, contractual agreement correcting some loophole where we have now an escape clause in the contract. They didn't have any problem with it. It was reviewed by our attorney. He gave us the go-ahead on this. So Commissioners, if we pass this item today, please just note that, the replacement item.
Do we need to read everything that's in red?
Hang on just a second. Did you read everything in red? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, making a motion that we approve HA2, Proposal from M&amp;R Solutions to Represent Ballin County Commission Lobbying Services, replacement item, standard MOA used by Commission for its lobbyists added with a 30-day termination clause, staff recommendations modified to this change, physical year 2023, budget amendment will be necessary if approved, 23-0069.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner McKenzie, a second by Commissioner Underwood. I will make a discussion point. Ron, we will be coming back on the 18th meeting with that budget amendment, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And all of this has been clarified and approved. I think we're gonna reap the benefits of this. Matt, you will see how great this is to have somebody that's working just for us, representing Ballin County and Montgomery for us, because the session will be here before you know it in March. And we are busy, and we don't have time to keep up with a lot of that stuff. And so having these, a set of eyes that is very seasoned to the game in Montgomery is going to be great to have. So with that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Ron, do you have anything for us today?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other senior staff today with a report?
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Last week, on Thursday, 9/29, we received an email from Karen Morris. She is the Program Manager of the Office of Community Planning and Development at the state level. She forwarded the entitlement document and requested for the Commission to make a decision on the entitlement for Ballin County. The deadline has passed when we received the document, so I don't believe that there is a rush on this. She did request for us to respond early this week. However, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, there is an estimate of 1,152,000 of potential entitlement CDBG funds, is with a letter stated. And what that would mean is that the county and local municipalities would no longer compete for these CDBG funds. However, from a staff's perspective, I just, I felt it necessary to say, once again, we do not have capacity to do this program. I'm not sure what each of you would want to do, but I felt it necessary to state that, from a staff's perspective, our recommendation would be to defer the status of this entitlement for the future. And it was just looking for some direction. We would like to maybe prepare an agenda for the next meeting for you to make that vote. And I was really just looking for direction as to how you would like to handle that.
I think I've already told you that we deferred it before.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we need to continue to defer it. Learning more and more about what the CDBG grants are and how that municipalities have better opportunity to administer these in their own needs and their own communities.
Right.
We have very few pockets throughout the unincorporated area where these even apply. And so since they have to flow through other, like, you know, entities and things, I think that it's best that we continue to defer that.
Thank you.
I just want, I'm just going to take your recommendation as a staff. I don't know much about it right now, so I'm gonna rely on you and your staff.
And what we can do, thank you, sir. And what we can do is we can bring this back on an agenda for the next meeting, just with the different options, and you would have the ability to select one of those. That would be to accept it, of course, or that way you have all of the options that are available to you as a Commission. I just wanted to make sure that that was the direction you would like to go.
Yeah, I think we need to sit down and look at it, because we do have some of those pockets that are out there that are pretty bad, and they could use some help.
But doesn't mean that those pockets can't.
Well, they can't go to the city, because they can't, it's not.
No, but they can have independent, like, the water authorities and people like that. Can't it flow through them?
They can go to the state directly and do it on a competitive basis. So I think there's a lot of education in this program that needs to be done. It's something that I know about this much about, very little about. I'm learning about it myself, so when I speak about it, I don't know all the ins and outs of it. You know, however, I do think that it is something to look into in the future at some point. But for this year, and them wanting for the county to make that decision, you know, well, this is something that the cities have been doing, okay? And the county has been deferring it. And with all the other stuff that's been heaped upon us with the ARPA funds and with the CDBGDR funds and ERAP and HRAPs and all that kind of stuff that we're learning about, I think that we need to defer it. Like you said, it doesn't, this is not a forever, you know? That's right. But for this year, I think we need to. Okay. All right, so the plan will be then, we will just bring this back to the next meeting. I just wanted to let you know that we did receive it, we do have it, and we will be bringing it to you for action.
Thank you so much, Kay.
Thank you.
Any other senior staff with a report today? Brad, do you have something for us today?
Just one very brief executive session item. Shouldn't take more than five or 10 minutes.
Okay. Let's see here, public comments. Press questions. Commissioner comments.
Just want to thank staff for getting this agenda out and getting it to us so that we can review it and get it approved. And thank y'all for all the hard work, and don't forget, you know, this month, you know, the proclamations that we had today, and don't forget, Walk to School is the fifth. So if you can participate, participate. And with that being said, I just want to thank everyone for all they do. Thank you.
I want to wish Junius Long a happy birthday. Today is his birthday. I saw him at the Old Time Days on Saturday, and he said, "Tuesday's my birthday." I said, "Oh, you shouldn't have told me, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it at the meeting." He said, "Oh, please don't, please don't call me out." I said, "Too late, Junius." I said, "On top of that, how'd you get that name?" He said, "My mama made it up." But anyhow, he is a mess. So anybody that doesn't know our Building Maintenance Director, his name is Junius Long, and today, October 4th, is his birthday. It's also a lot of people's birthdays, some people in my family, but I wanted to call Junius out particularly. And also, as Commissioner Gruber said, thank you, staff, for all that you do. There's a lot goes into this, we realize that. Because I now, I'm not going to misread in some of it, so it takes me long enough to read it. I can't imagine how much time it takes you guys to put it together. And we have a lot of things coming up. We have the stealing of the courthouse coming up this Thursday. I know they call it the removal, but I call it the stealing of the courthouse, because I'm from another part of the county. So y'all come out for that. It's a beautiful weather going on, bring your lawn chair, come out to the courthouse this Thursday. You'll see some of us in some Edwardian period attire, so it's that fun time of year to dress up and go back 100 years, 110 years. And I'm trying to think, yes, I am going to walk to school tomorrow with the kids, Foley. And I can't think of anything else, but just thank you guys so much for all that you do.
I'd just like to say thanks to the staff and employees of the county. You know, they work hard every day and do a great job. I am heading to Fairhood West tomorrow, so I think Daphne's available if anybody would like to make that tomorrow. I just want to say thank y'all, everybody, for what they've done. So thank you.
Thank you, all Commissioners. We've got a couple of things I wanted to note today. You know, it's hard to believe that a year has already passed, but Brian will know where I'm going with this. And I just wanted to extend our heartfelt prayers again today for Dannan Smith and her family as we are celebrating our employee, James Smith's passing anniversary today. It's been exactly one year. And I just want Dannan and her family to know that we are still praying for her and her strength as she goes through this stuff, so, as well as our CIS department. So that's just my somber comment for the day, but it's duly noted, because it hits home every time these dates roll around, you'll always remember them. So something on a positive note, yesterday, myself and Ron sat in the room right behind us here, and my hand was shaking when we were signing our closing paperwork for Novellus. That was a monumental task, and I want to thank everybody involved in making that a reality come true yesterday, because the deal is done. And we signed the papers yesterday, so that was pretty awesome. Commissioner Davis always joked around about how he thought he was signing something when he signed the line of credit, but you're not signing nothing until you sign closing papers for the largest aluminum recycling plant in the country, so, or in the world. So we're really looking forward to that, looking forward to that groundbreaking coming up. Also, continued prayers for the people in Florida, dealing with a catastrophic hurricane that has displaced so many people and actually took lives. I wanted to, just to take the time to remind the people of this county and in America that we need to pray for our nation. Continued prayers for our nation, because something has happened, watching the news last night, and our Vice President is politicizing this hurricane, taking advantage of something that's doesn't need to be taken advantage of. And I highly disrespect the way that our country is headed right now, and there's no reason to take a catastrophic hurricane that has affected everybody in that state and politicize it for their agenda. So pray for our nation, we need it. That's probably my number-one prayer that I say in the mornings, because we're heading into dark, dark times, and we need God on our side during these times. Thank you, staff, as just as well as all the other Commissioners have stated. Thank y'all for everything that you do, putting up with us, number one. Number two, all the hard work that goes on behind the scenes that we know nothing about in getting all this stuff ready. I will, I'd like to note for the record that this is, you know, my last meeting as Chairman will be October 18th, and I will be happy to take three years off of signing paperwork. So it is going to be a blessing to pass that gavel back to Commissioner Gruber, who will be steering the ship one more time for us. But that will be taking place in November. I'm just noting for the record that I've got today and October 18th to sign some papers, and maybe a few things that gets left out here in between, but I'm looking forward to taking a break on that. So it's been quite, it's been quite the year. So with that being said, Brad, if you would, take us into an executive session, and then I'll make my statement after I hear yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I would recommend that you make a motion, adopt a motion, to adjourn this meeting and convene an executive session to discuss with your attorney the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation, controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated, or eminently likely to be litigated if the governmental body pursues a proposed course of action. I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Alabama, and this exception is applicable to the planned discussion. So after a motion, a second, there'll be a vote, and then, Mr. Chairman, you can announce that we will not reconvene after the vote.
Commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we accept our county attorney's advice and go into executive session.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner McKenzie to go into an executive session as advised by our attorney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, we will not reconvene this meeting, and we will adjourn from the executive session.